All right, all right, all right. Hello? Can you hear me? I see smiles. I don't know. Okay, you can hear me. All right, good. Well, welcome, everybody, to the Wednesday, September 25th, 2024 City of Edina Planning Commission meeting. On behalf of the rest of the commission, we welcome you. We're grateful you're here. Say it every time, but your curiosity, your participation, and your feedback is vital to this process as we navigate change here in Edina specifically regarding the ways in which we would like to use our land. So tonight, we have two public hearings. I will go through what to expect for each of those later when they approach. In the meantime, I'll kind of give you a rundown of why feedback matters, as well as the agenda. First, as it relates to feedback, there's a lot of ways in which we get your feedback, whether it's here tonight, at a public hearing, or through email, or through our engagement website, www.bettertogetheredina.org. Anything that's shared in any way that gets its way to the planning department finds its way to us, and we consider that feedback before we make recommendations, as we will tonight. So for the agenda, what to expect? We'll call the meeting to order, then we'll do a roll call. That will be followed by the approval of tonight's meeting agenda, then the prior meeting's minutes. Then we have a community comment period, and that is your chance for anyone who is here in person to speak about a matter not on tonight's agenda. You'll have three minutes to do that. And then we open it up to our public hearings. Again, we have two. And then we will finish with our reports and recommendations, and that is something related to TIF. And then we end with chair member comments, staff comments, and then adjournment. So without further ado, call the meeting to order. And then roll call.
Commissioner Padilla.
Here.
Commissioner Ja. Commissioner Junka.
Here.
Commissioner Day.
Here.
Commissioner Bernstein.
Here.
Commissioner Felton. Commissioner Hanneman.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here. There's Commissioner Felton. On cue. You want to just say "here"? All right. I saw a nod. Anyways, we have Commissioner Felton joining, too. So next, we have the approval of tonight's meeting agenda. There's any proposed changes I'd like to...
Yeah, I do have a proposed change. So I would motion to remove item 8.1 from the agenda, the resolution B2409. I don't believe that this item is really in the purview of the planning commission. And to be honest, we're not trained on TIF. We're not members of the HRA. The planning commission does not have the power of the purse, so I don't find this discussion to be relevant to our goal for the city. We've already voted on whether 72nd and France Development conforms to the general plans for development and redevelopment of the city as a whole. So I mean, this seems redundant, and to be honest, a bit of a waste of our time and city planning time and resources. And then the last piece of this would be, in our packet, provided for this item, there's a report of inspection procedures and results for determining qualifications of a tax financing district. This proposal, or report, should I say, was put together by LHB, which I believe, if my memory serves correct, was awarded the contract for the proposed tunnel under France. And if that's incorrect, it can be corrected by the city, but they have a vested interest in this becoming a TIF district, so I don't see how we can consider that report as a piece of this.
Yeah, this is an interesting topic, as Carrie, other planning commissioners know. Anytime TIF ends up being used, it is a separate meeting later after we've made our approvals, and I think others probably feel the same way as Commissioner Day, just about why we are making those decisions. I think since it's on the agenda, we still proceed and let Bill Nundorff maybe address why it's on our agenda, but I think the points Ryan brings up are maybe the first things that we expect Bill to address. And then if that's something that we can potentially remove in the future, like, we're always trying to improve the process, so... Do you have any feedback, Carrie?
Yeah, part of the issue is, I believe, when it went to the planning commission, not sure exactly of the timing whether a TIF application was actually made, but once the TIF application is made, state law does require you to pass a resolution saying that the development plans are consistent with the comprehensive plan. So there is a resolution that you're asked to pass this evening.
And so because it relates to land use in general?
Correct, and it's required by state law for the planning commission to make that finding in regard to the development plans being consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, well noted, but I would think that the... So I would... Well, we can get to it at that point, too, but I wouldn't be prepared to vote on it until an alternative, until, I guess, a separate entity other than LHB prepared a statement on the qualifications for the tax increment financing district, because I consider this to be a pretty clear conflict of interest based on their contract that they have for the bridge, or tunnel, should I say?
Maybe keep in mind of the time and the clock that you mentioned. Does anyone else want to remove this, or feel like proceeding with it still on the I would encourage us to keep it on the agenda, but then address those points right away. Sound good? So I guess, do we have a different motion?
I don't believe there was a second.
This is just for tonight's meeting agenda.
So you need a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda?
As... Yep, as written.
Motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So that carries. We will address that later, but thank you for bringing that up. Next, we have the approval of the prior meeting's minutes from September 12th. If there's any proposed changes, welcome a motion with modifications, or just as it stands.
Motion to...
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, so next, we have the community comment period, but before we do that, we have a new face up here. We have a new student commissioner, so one thing that's really cool that the city does is gives the opportunity for two students in the community to serve up on the planning commission with us, and it's quite a remarkable commitment in the fact that you're aware enough to want to join, so I'd like to give you an opportunity to just introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about why you wanted to join and what you're interested in. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ben. I'm a junior at Edina High School. I play soccer, I run track, I'm part of the business club, and I joined the planning commission to just learn a little bit more about our city. I wanted to be a part, kind of both like what happens and know what goes on in my town, and I'm excited to be here, and I hope to give a student point of view to the commission. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. All right, that's great. So now we'll go to the community comment period. This, like a public hearing, but is only for people who are here in person. You have three minutes. You can come up to one of the podium. When the light turns green, state your full name, address, and you have three minutes to speak about whatever you'd like that's not on tonight's agenda. Is anyone here that would like to do that? Seeing none, we will close that part of the meeting tonight and move right to the public hearings. So just for those who'd like to get ready to participate, that are tuning in remotely, again, there's two public hearings. If you'd like to provide testimony remotely, you're going to follow probably the prompts on the screen. You're going to call the following number, 312-535-8110, and enter access code 2630-751-1196. The password is 5454. And then when it's your time, you'll press star 3 on your keypad to get in the queue to speak, but you don't need to do that right yet. So what to expect for a public hearing? This one is a three-foot height variance from the maximum height requirements of six feet to allow for a nine-foot tall fence along France Avenue. The process for a public hearing is an applicant, or a developer, resident, whoever, applies for something that doesn't really conform. Staff puts together a report, and they then put together a presentation based off of that report and provide that to us tonight. We ask questions, have some back and forth, then we open it to the applicant team to give their own presentation if they'd like, answer questions, back and forth. Then we open it to the public hearing, and then that is your chance as a citizen, or anyone tuning in remotely, to testify about the matter. You have three minutes to do that. Once we close the public hearing, it comes back to the planning commission. We deliberate, and we make a recommendation for approval or denial, and then we move on to the next public hearing. So for the first one, Planner Ocker, take it away.
Thank you, Chair, members of the planning commission. This is a request for a three-foot height variance for a six-foot maximum height allowed for a fence to replace four existing six-foot tall fences. The proposal is for solid wall eight-foot fences with a trellis top for a total of nine feet of height along France Avenue for four properties at 4701, 4703, 4705, and 4707 Meadow Road. These are four properties that front Meadow Road, and then there's an additional five other properties that also front Meadow Road, and this is between 47th and 48th along France Avenue, the back of their lots, back up to France. Most of the homes are at a lower elevation, and their backyard slope up towards France Avenue. This is the view that's currently there along most of the properties, or the affected properties. The solid wall six-foot fence that's currently there is right up against, or very close to, the edge of the sidewalk, with the exception of the southernmost of the four properties has this indentation where there's a utility pole. Now, the replacement fence would be in front of the utility pole, so it wouldn't look like this. It would just be a solid wall nine-foot fence in front of the utility pole. And another view of the fence as it exists along France Avenue. So the purpose of the fence is to replace the six-foot fences at the intersection of 47th and France Avenue. There's going to be... It's to screen... The nine-foot tall fences are to screen and buffer four properties from the BRTE line intersection improvements. I'm sure you've noticed, there's been a lot of construction along France Avenue, and that's a lot of it. In this particular situation, they have two stations on both the east and west sides of the street. The 4700 block of France Avenue will have two stations directly across from each other, so on the west side, and then on the east side, rather than the diagonal situation that usually occurs at an intersection, given engineering, I guess they needed to do it across from one another. The other... The stations themselves include bus shelters, which are 12 feet long with sloping roofs. The front of the shelters are 12 and a half feet tall. The backs are about eight and a half feet. The shelters are lighted and heated. The stations will have 14-foot-tall LED illuminated pylon sign, and the station will include talking fare card machines, bike racks, trash, and recycling receptacles. As part of the E-line project, Hennepin County is installing a median strip and will include crosswalks on the south side of the intersection, and then also it will have the flashing lights, and then there will be a new 30-foot-tall street light on the corner. So this is a rendering, and it's showing the six-foot fence. It does not show... This was, I believe, done by Metro Transit, but it gives you an idea of how that will look. It includes that crosswalk sign. Can't really see the top of the new light. And then this is just a typical, one of the bus stations. So evening also lit up. This is the proposed fencing product that they are proposing on the eight-foot section, and then there would be a one-foot topper that would increase the height to nine feet, which would be a trellis top. It encompasses the four homes just south of West 47th Street. Each have approximately a 60-foot-wide lot that backs up to France Avenue. You're not seeing the southernmost property all the way. So it would be 4701, 03, 05, and 07, with a 65-foot length along their rear property boundary, eight-foot solid wall, and then a one-foot topper with the trellis top is what they are proposing. It should be noted that there are other intersections along the E-line, and so this is France Avenue and West 58th Street, and it's not north-south, so you have to look at... North is this way. So the property on the northeast corner will have a station in their front yard at 5733 France, and then also at 5729. It's sort of between the two, and that this particular intersection will have them in a diagonal fashion. And then there will be one along the side yard of 3901 West 58th Street. So this is the side of their house, house fronts, house fronts, and they will have, you know, some of the same typical station features that are going to be at the 47th and France Avenue intersection. There's also going to be a stop or station at West 62nd and France, and again, this is not running north-south, so West 67th, which is on the west side, the station will be located in front of 6129 with a rendering of that location in context. So there can be a case made for both approval and denial of the request. Denial of the request for a three-foot fence height variance for properties located at 4701, 4703, 4705, and 07 Meadow Road could be based on the following findings: that the proposal does not meet the standards for a variance with no circumstances unique and specific to the lot; there are other properties located along France Avenue equally affected by improvements of the BRTE line next to their property; the properties currently have reasonable use with an existing six-foot fence located the length of France Avenue between 47th and 48th. Approval could promote requests for similar variances to fence height and set a precedent, so there's four that are being requested for that portion of France Avenue, but this could possibly set up, I guess, opportunities for others to ask for the same thing. The property owner situation is not unique to other properties along France Avenue with the same or possibly more severe impacts to the front and side yards of properties, and could promote requests that are similar, and the four properties might provide a disjointed fence height along France Avenue, which may introduce some aesthetic concerns. There's also a case for approval. Approval of the request for a three-foot height variance to allow nine-foot tall fence for all four properties along Meadow Road could be based on the following findings: that there is a practical difficulty caused by the required BRTE line improvements, including the lighting noise, a crosswalk with impacting bus stops directly across from each other on the south side of 47th Street and France Avenue intersection, as opposed to staggered, like most intersection situations. They do have a lot more going on in terms of that intersection for improvements and impact. The unique circumstance includes the new crosswalk improvements, again, flashing lights, new street lights. The proposal would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. A nine-foot tall fence would offer screening for neighboring properties from improvements at the intersections and would help to maintain neighborhood character. Any approval should be subject to the following conditions: the plans and survey date stamped August 21st, 2024, and subject to engineering staff memo dated September 13th, 2024. Engineering memo does support the request. Staff did recommend denial, given the fact that even aside from looking along France Avenue, there are other conflicting land uses, and it may be a more appropriate way to look at it holistically, and not to have individual variances come forward for the planning commission to consider. If there's some way to address our current code, that would certainly be helpful. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have. We do have some of the neighbors that have applied for the variance here and are ready for a presentation. With that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris? Commissioner Felton?
Um, Planner Ocker, what is the current width of the sidewalk? Eight feet?
Uh, probably. I'm thinking it's probably close to that.
And that... And what is the width of the sidewalk at the bus station? Do you know?
I don't know, but it does... If you could see from this, it comes out, so it's probably, you know, at least two, three more feet. I also have noted that in the applicant narrative, the fence is actually... The existing fence that you see here is actually further back from their lot line, and they are planning on adjusting it right up to their lot line, which may impact exactly where some of that sidewalk will go. It's very minimal, but it's closer than where the fence is.
Thank you.
Their lot lines.
One quick question. Is, like, Hennepin County or Metro Transit, have they provided any guidance of how they plan to kind of mitigate these visual or auditory or other concerns throughout this process?
I think that's an excellent question for the property owners, because they have been actively in contact with them.
Okay. I just didn't know if maybe one of their representatives were here this evening. I mean, I don't think they're obligated to, but it might just be helpful to hear. Okay. Any other questions for Chris? All right. Thank you, Chris. We will give a chance to the applicant, applicant team, whoever wants to come forward, if you'd like to present anything, or just simply stand for questions, that'd be great. Just introduce yourself, name, address, et cetera. Thank you.
My name is Karen Willey. I live at 4701 Meadow Road, which is the corner, and with me is Molly... Well, let's start with Robin here. Robin Harmon, who's at 4703, and Molly Rice, who is at 4705, Betty Goodman, who is at 4707, is out of town tonight. I would like to say two things in my introductory remarks. One is that my mother just died 10 days shorter for 99th birthday, so this is not really where I want to be tonight, but I thought it was important to be here, and so I am. And the second thing I want to say is that I would respectfully request that when a staff recommendation is made, particularly when it is in opposition to the request of the residents, that it appear on the website earlier than the day of the hearing, which is how it works today. I did not find out, none of us found out, until about 4 o'clock this afternoon what the staff recommendation was. As the planning commission staff has noted, we have been working with Metro Transit for a long time on this issue. I guess I might address that first in terms of the concern from the planning staff about perhaps the fact that consistency would be helpful in something like this? That may be, but the city has known about this project for a long, long time. I have been working with the city on this project for literally two and a half years, probably, and to your question about Metro Transit mitigation, the answer is none. They do nothing. They purport to have public hearings, you can submit comments, but they don't really listen to anything, and they're really going to do what they want to do. So what I'd like to do briefly, and then if Molly or Robin have additional comments, hopefully they can make them, is kind of walk through this staff recommendation and share the concerns that we have. On the first page, where the question is the variance would be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance, as the staff report says, screening is appropriate between conflicting and impacted land uses and supports protecting residential properties, which is what we're trying to do of the four applicants. They go on to say, however, that there are these other... Two other places, the 58th Street stations and the 62nd Street stations, that are similarly circumstantiated. That's not the case. As the staff person indicated, this is the only residential spot on the entire E-line where the stations are directly across from each other, as opposed to on diagonal corners. So I, in particular, because it's my lot, will be looking not at one station, but two. And as was always also mentioned in the report, there's also going to be two flashing crosswalks on this, and as the assistant city planner noted, there's a lot going on at this intersection, So the second concern is that we have reasonable use with the existing six-foot tall fences. That's true. The problem with the existing six-foot tall fences is they do nothing to screen what we're going to be looking at. Like, as already stated, these things are almost nine feet at the back, they're 12 feet at the front, they are lighted 24 hours a day, 24 hours a day. And so in terms of, you know, apart from the fact that the buses are going to be running, we're told, every 10 minutes from 6:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. This is a significant change from when we bought our properties, what we're used to. We've also already experienced change at the hands of the city, because when all of us purchased these properties, there was no sidewalk back there, and there was a tree barrier between the back of our lots and France Avenue. And about 12 years ago, the city decided to put a sidewalk in. That's fine, but we lost our tree barrier, and now we're going to be exposed to even more light, noise, you know, I mean, you name it. Any kind of pollution you can think of is going to happen. And the other thing I should just mention, I guess, is that when the city sidewalk was put in, we've learned as part of this survey that we had to do in order for our zoning application, that in fact, the sidewalk is on our property. It infringes on my property at the corner by about 12 feet, and that... I mean, I'm sorry, 12 inches, and then it goes down from there. So we have been working with the city engineer to try to deal with the encroachment, and I think it's everybody's feeling that now is the time to remedy all of these issues. And there's... There are timing issues, because Metro Transit has already started the construction on our side of this street. So we've got to figure out, what are we going to do about the easement that the city needs, or some other sort of mitigation, and what are we going to do about this fence? And it's all going to happen this fall, so there are some timing constraints. There's also a concern that's expressed in number three about a disjointed fence height and may introduce aesthetic concerns. I'm not aware of any aesthetic requirements in the zoning code, but maybe there are. There's already a disjointed fence issue, because when the city put in the sidewalk, they had to do a sort of retaining raw wall fence for the four properties that are to the south of us. So the fences already don't line up, they can't line up, because that is a retaining wall fence that actually sits on the sidewalk. And we... One of the reasons that all four of us were willing to do this together is because we thought, as we said in our application, that having one consistent fence built at the same time, and then nicely adjoining that city fence, was a much better aesthetic than having one of us do something one year and one of us do something another year. So we tried to address that as well. Then there's a concern about the plight of the landowner is not apparently unique in this situation. As I've already said, the other two spots, 58 and 62, are not the same, because the shelters are not directly opposite each other behind. are not directly opposite each other behind my house. The other issue is that we don't have good mitigation opportunities other than a fence, because to the question about how big is the fence, I'm sorry, how big is the sidewalk going to be? So everywhere else Metro Transit has built these new stations, they have ripped up the sidewalk. They do not intend to rip up this sidewalk. They want to leave two feet of it. And the reason they want to do that is because they are rightly concerned that if they do put up the sidewalk, there will be significant erosion into our yard, which is exactly what happened when the city built the sidewalk 12 years ago. And especially in my yard, more so in Rob, some in Robin's as well, little less in Molly's, the grade from France down is so steep, I can't get anything to grow there. So I've got some old trees, planting new ones is not an option, because I can't keep water there, and I can't keep sunlight there. So the fence is really the only way, the only realistic way we have to mitigate the effects of the shelters and all of the BRT stuff. And then the last concern, I guess, is that the additional three feet may seem to alter the essential character of the locality. I'm not exactly sure why that is, because as I said, there's no requirement now that the fences be uniform. And these would be uniform, they'd just be taller. So going through the three reasons for denial, it says, "The proposal does not meet the standards with no circumstances unique and specific to the lot." Again, I think it is unique and specific, because we're the only place where both of the stations are directly across the street from each other. "The properties currently have reasonable use with six-foot fences." We do, but it won't do anything for us, because it's not going to help with how tall these shelters are going to be. "And the property owner's situation is yet not unique." Again, I would argue that it is. So I guess that's about all I have to say. I apologize for my mild crankiness. It's just, you know, hard to have your mother die, and hard to have the city engineer say that he's supporting this, and that he thinks it should be fine, and then learn at 4 o'clock this afternoon that it maybe wasn't going to be fine. So.
I'm Robin Harmon.
Please do. Thank you.
When we did the survey and we realized that the city sidewalk encroached on our properties, you know, we had to start working with the city engineer to come up with an idea, because the city's going to either need to remove the sidewalk to erase the encroachment, or we're going to have to give them an easement. So we're kind of in the middle of all that negotiating, and the city engineer is trying to figure out if he can remove it, build some kind of a wall to ensure that we don't have erosion. So like, now is the time, you know, it might be great to have a great policy on taller fences, or, but, you know, we're in this situation right now where we kind of need to do something. And just an aside, the city engineer said, you know, he drives around all the time and sees taller fences, just nobody knows that there's a limit in Adana. And, you know, he said, "Good for you for going for variance," but lots of people just build taller fences, so we're trying to do the best. Thanks.
Thank you.
No, great job. Great job. No.
Appreciate your time and patience. Any questions for the applicant team? Sure?
I'd just like to offer an apology that you have to be here today. And there are nine-foot fences in other parts of the city, and it's unfortunate that we're in this circumstances. I appreciate the sensitivity of time, but just extending my apologies.
Thank you. All right, so without further questions, it is a public hearing, so we will open it to that part of the meeting. I gave instructions before, but I'll repeat them again for anyone tuning in remotely, and then we'll open it to people who are here in person. So again, please call 312-535-8110. Enter access code 2630-751-1196. The password is 5454, so enter that, too. And then press *3 on your keypad to get in the queue to speak. We will turn it over to people who are here in person. There's about a one-minute lag, so we'll return to the virtual queue momentarily. Is there anyone who is here that would like to testify about this particular matter? If you have three minutes to do so, come to either podium, full name, address. We'll let you know when your time's up. Don't see anyone. So we will turn to the virtual queue, maybe just give it only 30 more seconds. It's been about 30. We'll wait 30 seconds to see if anyone's in that, ready to speak. No one currently?
No one.
Okay.
Nobody has joined, so I think it's safe to proceed.
We have a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So move the public hearings close. Now we'll take it back to the planning commission to deliberate. Looking for either a recommendation to approve the variance or deny it ultimately. Yeah, Commissioner Padilla.
I'd like to thank everybody for their presentation. I'm also very sorry for your loss. I know it's a difficult time for you, and I understand this is the last place you want to be. Not for that reason, but for many of the others that you addressed. I am in favor of this variance. I think this is a very unique set of circumstances, and the idea that you'd have a light 24 hours and a talking sign, you know, right above the fence, adjacent to your property, is certainly a unique circumstance. I do think, without going through, you know, I have them all written down, and I differ from the staff in terms of feeling that it's a unique circumstance, and there are practical difficulties, and there's impacted land use. I also think it's very admirable that you are coming to the planning commission together as four homes, and that you were trying to do this and make, you know, at least have some uniformity in the change that you're looking for. I think just looking at this fence, three feet is not going to impact aesthetically the street at all, so I am in favor of this variance.
Thank you. Yeah, Commissioner Day.
All right, so thank you for being here tonight. Agree with what Commissioner Padilla basically said, and I just wanted to get into the technical details of the variance a little bit, because I'm usually, as an engineer, pretty stickler for variance requests, but this one, I think, is pretty reasonable in terms of, you know, going through the, so I'm going to step through these. The first one, "The variance would be in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the ordinance." Well, we have the fence ordinance, and here in the packet, we say, you know, "The purpose and intent of the fence height ordinance is to provide reasonable fence height to allow privacy." Okay, that's important. "And provide a consistent height standard." There's no minimum to the heights, to the height standard. So, you know, I think about my yard that I have, and my neighbors all have different heights, the different heights of fences all around, and made of different materials, so there's really no consistency there. I think it's, the ordinance is there to make sure we don't get 12-foot-tall fences. So I can see why we put a cap, but I think this is, you know, in harmony with the general purpose of having this fence, this fence height ordinance. Getting down to the consistent with the comprehensive plan, this one's pretty easy, you know, it's R1 district, not really much to comment on that. And then the practical difficulties, right? So the owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the zoning ordinance. I think it's pretty reasonable that they want a bigger fence in order to provide some privacy from, you know, constant light and traffic on this, this stretch of, stretch of road. "The plight of the landowners due to circumstances is unique to the property." It's not necessarily unique to your property, but you're being impacted in a unique way by the changes being made. And then, you know, the last piece here, "The variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality." Again, I don't think the fence determines the essential character of the neighborhood, and to have, you know, a uniform fence along four different lots, made of the same material, at the same height, I think, certainly wouldn't alter any kind of character of the neighborhood. So, you know, I see all the criteria being met for variance here. I think it's a very reasonable request. And, you know, as we were going through this, I thought to myself, you know, how can we potentially look to change this ordinance for future properties, right? Because we, as a city, want to be moving towards this type of development with rapid transit and whatnot. So other residents will have this concern, and I think it would be, people would be more receptive to some of these changes if they knew that they could have additional screening and whatnot, if they were, you know, if we proposed route changes, you know, through, next to their backyard and whatnot. So, yeah, that's me.
Thank you. Commissioner Bornstein, felt, others?
Yeah, we can just go down the line, I suppose. I'm on the other side of this one. I tend to agree more with the staff recommendation for these reasons. The fending structures that relief is, that are causing light and noise and just visual obstruction are all above nine feet. There's a 14, there's a 14-foot LED sign, a 12-foot roof station, a 30-foot streetlight. I don't think this fence is going to mitigate the effects of those, because they're all substantially taller than the fence being proposed. I think this type of improvement is relatively normal for a transit corridor like France. And I do think that granting, I acknowledge that there's a, there's a station on the opposite side of this one, but I don't think that materially changes the type of, the type of effect that would probably happen at the other places in the city where it's just aligned slightly differently. I do have a concern that if we were to grant this variance, we'd have a precedent where we'd need to grant it for the other properties where there are also transit stations, and probably for everyone who's got a backyard where their neighbor has some structure in their backyard they don't want to look at, like an ADU, or anything that is just something that's visually unappealing. And so for those reasons, I don't think the standards are met and would probably recommend denial. Although I do appreciate all the applicants coming and asking for permission. It's much better to do that than, than asking for forgiveness later, which is something we also see. So, thanks.
Commissioner Felton?
Thank you for coming in tonight, and thank you for your presentation and all the work that you've put into this so far. I agree with everything Commissioner Bornstein has said. I live in the Morningside area, and I walk from Morningside down to 15th and France probably once a week. And I find this section with the sidewalk right next to the street and the fence, the least pedestrian-friendly section of that entire walk. And my worry is a nine-foot fence rather than a six-foot fence is going to be more, even more unfriendly. And so, and so that, when you're walking with a friend down that street, it just does not feel wide enough. So I'm thrilled that, that at the station, the sidewalk's going to get wider, that will feel more comfortable. And I also think, you had mentioned not doing trees, but I think really looking into the idea of a living fence, a green fence, arborvitae or something like that, if you can figure out some way to do that, they can grow taller than the nine-foot fence, and it would help muffle noise, and it would also be green year-round. Because in this image that's up right now, during the wintertime, there's no leaves, and those things that are taller than the nine-foot fence, the talking sign and the pedestrian crossing are always going to be there. And if you can get a blue spruce and some arborvitae in there, that would really help, screen it and muffle the noise. So I think those things are probably a better option for blocking this distraction, and it'd probably be a little friendlier, too, as a pedestrian. So I too am going to vote against this. And one of this, one of the reasons we have the six-foot height limit is because that's the tallest we want our fences. And like you said, just because someone builds a fence taller than that doesn't necessarily make it right. But I do appreciate you coming to us and asking for this.
So I think with last year, the city built a nine-foot fence on Valley View, adjacent to the sidewalk between 69th and 70th, because the neighborhood, neighbors directly affected, directly behind the fence, I'm sorry, were impacted by the change of use of the building across the street to a more high-intensity use. And so to accommodate that change and impact to the neighbors' property, the city paid for and put in a nine-foot fence. Your neighbors to the south had a six-foot fence and retaining wall put in because of the drainage and struggle there. I completely agree that trees would be a better option here for your guys' comfort. It sounds like maybe trees are not growing. I sure do wish the city would do right by you all, because if we've taken the trees down to add a sidewalk, and now we're adding more, to me, we haven't helped mitigate those impacts on your property. And I understand that this is not a city road, but you're still a Dyna residence. And so I think we, what we can do to accommodate that impact is allow a nine-foot fence. And I don't know if you've talked to the city arborist or forester, but I'm hopeful he could have some recommendations or some, be able to offer you some assistance, because... Oh, sure.
Well, I was a really unhappy camper when all those trees got cut down on the fence when, I mean, the sidewalk went in 12 years ago. I can't tell you how many gardeners, experts, people I have talked to, and how much money I have spent on trees in that backyard that have died. And part of the problem is that there are a few large trees, so I have to plant something that will tolerate shade, because otherwise I have to cut down another tree to do like an arborvitae fence, which I can't do anyway, because as I said, the grade is so steep, you can't plant right up along France, because there's nothing to put the roots into. So, and I did talk to Luther, I was actually at Weber Park with my garden club on Monday. So I had a pretty extensive conversation with Luther about a lot of things. I, I am confident, after 12 years of trying, I cannot plant trees back there that will grow. I love arborvitae, I love evergreens, but it's not going to happen.
Any other comments? I guess that leaves it to me. This is a tough one. I think, just in general, we said a standard for a maximum for some sort of consistency in just, and I'm not as worried about a precedent that's getting set. I think we keep that at six feet, and we leave it for one-off cases like this, where we look at all of the details. Like, this is very unique, even compared to the other two locations that were shown. They're different in a number of ways. Is this as obtrusive as it appearing in your front yard? No, but those lots, and it being a front yard versus a backyard, the gray, there's a lot that's different. So I appreciate that there is a standard, and we're trying to keep it at six feet. But I'm on, I'm on the, I'm in favor of supporting this one for the reasons mentioned. And again, this, I don't need to belabor why. The reasons that were mentioned to support, I support those more than the ones for denial. I see both sides, for sure. But this just doesn't seem like it's going to make that big of an impact on literally anyone, except provide a lot of benefit to the homeowners. And that's, that's ultimately like what we're trying to balance when it comes to a fence ordinance. This seems like an easy ask. But any other comments? Welcome a motion.
Motion to approve the request as outlined in the staff report. Second?
Let's do a roll call vote. Sorry, is there any discussion after those two? Okay.
Commissioner Padilla?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Bornstein?
Nay.
Commissioner Felton?
Nay.
Commissioner Heneman?
Aye.
Chair Bennett?
Aye. So that's four to two, motion-
Aye.
Commissioner Bornstein?
Nay.
Commissioner Felton?
Nay.
Commissioner Heneman?
Aye.
Chair Bennett?
Aye. So that's four to two, motion carries. Good luck with the rest of your approvals. Thank you for coming. All right. We have another public hearing. Chris, are you taking this one, too? Okay. So similar process to the previous one. This is for a conditional use permit at 5208 Philbrook Lane for a stem wall with fill pad for a new home to be compliant with FEMA and with zoning variances that include a 4.09-foot setback variance from the 10-foot requirement for a 5.91-foot side yard setback on the west side of the property, and for a 22.7% variance from the 50% maximum for exterior basement walls to be 72.7% above grade and therefore counted as a third story that might be one of the longest we've had in a while. So, thank you. Chris, take it away.
No, thank you. This request is for a conditional use permit with variances to tear down the existing home and build a new home at 4208 Philbrook Lane. The property is located in the northeast corner of Philbrook. You can see here. It backs up to a portion of Pamela Park and where the Minnehaha Creek overflow is. This is a photograph of the existing home that's currently there. The existing home is currently located in the floodway. The original home was built in 1960, and it predates the flood insurance study conducted in the late 1970s. So there's a lot of homes, especially on the east side, that were built prior to the flood study, and unfortunately, some of them ended up being in the flood zone. This one happens to be in the floodway, and you can see where the property and the home is bisected by that contour. Grading and fill are restricted in the floodway. After conducting a site and structure study, the homeowner established that renovation or addition to the current structure is not possible, given the floodway designation and their family needs. And the next slides I have are the proposed survey of what they're proposing to replace the existing non-conforming home that has a basement that's lower than the flood elevation. The house is in the flood zone. It is a goal of the city whenever we have an opportunity to lift those properties out of the flood zone, to do what we can in order to accomplish that. Because currently, this property is in the floodway, and there is really virtually nothing that they can do to improve the property short of trying to lift it out. So this is the new home that's being proposed. It's sort of the magenta color. Underneath, you can see the existing home. The setbacks are the lines in yellow. The existing home is non-conforming for side yard setback on both the right and left sides. The footprint of the home is larger. They couldn't get any closer to the front lot line. They had to maintain the front yard setback. They also were trying to maintain the side yard setbacks as much as possible. What they ended up doing is shortening up the right side of the home, and with the left side of the home, they would maintain the existing non-conforming setback that's currently there. So the house that they're proposing is more conforming to our current code or will be, and the floods, it will be taken out of the floodway than the existing home. So this is the setback compliance table. Meets front yard setback. Again, they're increasing the proposed side yard setback on the right side. The left side, they're going to just match the existing non-conforming setback. They're well within the setback for real lot line. They can't go any further back, just based on the fact that there is floodway behind it. The building height is lower than the required or city standard that they could go up to, and that's measured from existing grade. So when I talk about the two-and-a-half-story piece, that's the maximum number of stories. This house has to be considered a three-story home because more than 50% of that basement level is exposed. So it's considered a three-story home. So they're trying to get a variance from that because they can't move any fill around because of the flood zone. However, if you're measuring it according to the building height requirement, it's lower than the maximum they could be. So whether they had a basement below or not, they're still not pushing it up any higher than what the maximum would be allowed. They're well within the structure and impervious service coverage requirements. This is the proposed home in context with the proposed conceptual floodway boundary. So it would be pulled out of the flood zone, and they would be putting the new home on fill, and they will have a stem wall. So the conditional use permit is actually to allow the fill and the stem wall on the So a bit of background of the design and location. That was determined to be possible after extensive coordination with our engineering department, the DNR, and the watershed district. And so those are the local controls that are looking at this project. In order for them to actually build it, they will have to get a letter of map amendment through FEMA. So if they can get all of the local approvals, then they'd have to request a letter, letter of map revision through FEMA, and there is no guarantee that they will necessarily approve that. But these are the first steps in order to achieve bringing the house up out of the flood zone. Even with achieving those approvals, there is no guarantee if FEMA will approve the project. This property is a third-generation-owned property that has always been held in the family. The owners are invested and have, and have spent a lot of time and upfront resources for just the possibility to rebuild on the lot. So here's the lower level of the, of the plan, main floor plan, second floor plan, and then the home in elevation. And you can see that the overall height is lower than the maximum that would be allowed, even given the fact that you have some exposed basement wall area. And then the front elevation and the home in context with some of the neighboring homes. So regarding the conditional use permit, it does not have an, have an undue adverse impact on government facilities, utility services, or existing or proposed improvements. The proposed project is located within an established neighborhood and will be rebuilding on a former home site with pre-existing governmental facilities, utilities, and services. So there will be no impact in addition to the, what was already existing. Will it generate traffic within the capacity of the street serving the property? Yes, there will be no change to that. Does not have an undue adverse impact on public health, safety, or welfare. Again, it's a rebuild one house, one house for one house. Staff does not believe the project will have any adverse impact on public health, safety, or welfare. It will not impede the normal or orderly development or improvement of other properties in the vicinity. Staff believes the proposed new home will enhance the property and will fit, fit well within the site. The proposed use is allowed in the R1 zoning district. The proposed project does not impede any normal or orderly development or improvement of surrounding property. It conforms to the applicable restrictions and special conditions of the district in which it's located as imposed by this section. The proposed project has been designed to satisfy all city code provisions, with the exception of the variances that are required, and those are all based on the existing conditions that are currently on site, and also subject to the approval of FEMA. Is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? No amendment is needed from the comprehensive plan. The house is permitted in the R1 zoning district. Minnesota statutes requires the following conditions must be satisfied affirmatively for the variances that are being requested. Will leave practical difficulties that prevent a reasonable use. The left side yard setback variance of 4.09 feet from the 10-foot requirement for a 5.91-foot side yard setback at the front south corner of the home matches the existing non-conforming side yard setback at the original home, and they have very limited opportunity in order to fit a home on the lot, given the flood zone constraints. The new home will maintain existing non-conforming setback on the right side while shifting the footprint to adhere to the current setback requirements on the left side. The applicant has indicated multiple scenarios were studied, and while the home width could be reduced or the front yard setback increased, this would increase the amount of fill and impact in the floodway. Neighboring homes' side yard setbacks are consistent also with the five-foot side yard setback throughout the, throughout the block. Most of the homes were built in the 60s, and they had similar setbacks as the existing house does. Will it correct extraordinary circumstances applicable to this property but not applicable to other properties in the vicinity? The floodway designation is an extraordinary circumstance affecting and driving all aspects of the home design. The proposed 4.09-foot setback variance is reasonable. The property has extraordinary circumstances, given the limited opportunities. And the basement is limited in ability to comply with the zoning ordinance while complying with the floodplain ordinance. You can't put that basement any lower. It actually had to be raised up two feet above the flood elevation. There are circumstances that are unique to the property, not common to similarly zoned property that are not self-created. The circumstances related to the proposed project in both requested variances are unique to the property lot, given the lot configuration, flood zone elevations, and impacts that are specific and unique to the site that are not like other similarly zoned properties. Will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? The granting of variances will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The subject property is currently used for a single dwelling unit. It will continue to be used for that. The size, location, and scale of the proposed structure is similar to other existing buildings in the neighborhood, and the location of the structure was chosen to comply with the FEMA floodplain ordinance. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit request and for the 4.09-foot setback variance, and for the exterior basement walls to be more than 50% above grade to construct a new home at 4208 Philbrook. Approval is subject to the following findings. The proposed project meets the conditional use permit standards of Chapter 36, as I indicated previously. The proposed project meets the criteria of the Minnesota, Minnesota state statutes and the Dyna zoning ordinance to grant both variances requested. The property is currently located in a FEMA floodplain designation of floodway. It is a goal of the city to remove structures from the flood zone represented with the opportunity. This proposal will achieve that goal. The project presents opportunity to correct floodplain designation, which is a practical difficulty that is unique and extraordinary and is a circumstance of the property. The proposed project will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Any approval is subject to the following conditions. The construction plans must be consistent with the proposed survey and plans dated stamped August 15, 2024. Compliance with all the conditions outlined in the city engineer's memo dated September 16, 20, excuse me, 2024. Admin, excuse me. Administrative exception to the first-floor requirement. Excuse me. A successful letter of map revision or LOMAR from FEMA, which moves the floodway designation, demonstrated no increase in or transfer in flood risk to others certified by a licensed engineer. Proposed stem wall must be certified by a licensed structural engineer. The permit issued by the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District and an elevation certificate will be required before issuing a certificate of occupancy upon the building completion. Also, compliance with the tree protection ordinance in accordance with the city forester. With that, I will stop and answer any questions you have, and we do have the homeowners and the representative here as well.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Ooh, mouthful. Yeah. Questions for Chris? Mr. Heneman?
It's contagious. I'm, I have a couple of questions for you, Chris, sorry, and maybe I just wasn't following. The home can't be remodeled in its current shell. Why?
Because if you have a existing non-conforming structure in the floodway, it's considered an obstruction. So you're limited to 50% of the value of the structure, not the entire property, and most of the value is in the lot, in order to make any sort of improvements and to some degree, just code improvements, like new windows, that sort of thing. And that, the goal of that, I believe, is that FEMA doesn't want to continually have these non-conforming properties have to make claims after, and they've continually been improved over time, so their value has increased. So...
So, and is that like a cumulative running total? So if you're pulling permits to redo your kitchen for 80, and then you do your windows for 40, like, does...
It does accumulate, but it can reset. I have, yes, I have Jessica Wilson, who is our water resource manager with the engineering department, and she is very well-versed in that. Did I get any of that right?
You're doing great, Chris. You're doing so great. Just to kind of like, the spirit of the zoning code with, you know, when you have a building that's in the floodway, you can't make a change to the envelope of the structure. So it's not even just a horizontal expansion. You can't expand vertically either. And then, so it's not, they're not one in the same as kind of two things if you're in the floodway. There's that no expansion of the envelope, and then there's also that substantial improvement limit, 50% of the building value. And the whole purpose of that is to kind of allow a property owner to, to maintain and stay in that home over time, but the idea is that on a, on a generational timeframe, that these houses get to a conforming state. So I think it's meant to make it, then you kind of make that calculation, which these owners have done, to say, you know, we're not going to have the home that we need here. And so then you reconstruct it, and it's elevated.
So, and in this circumstance, they're going to bring it pretty close to conforming, but then they still have to get this letter of map revision?
Yep. So they've got a, the floodway designation, we will not permit a new home in a floodway. But I think what's unique here is that floodway designation doesn't seem to be true. It seems like more of a modeling error than a real floodway risk there. And so that's why we're helping kind of them navigate this process of getting that kind of, that error fixed with FEMA. And because it's a, is a map that we update into the, adopt into zoning code, we have to use that map as it is. So they're going to have to go through this formal revision process through FEMA, update it in that zoning code before we can permit a building in a, on this lot because of the current floodway.
But isn't the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District sort of come up with very similar numbers to FEMA, or are they off the same?
So there's kind of two, there's the floodplain, that's like where the still water is going to be when you're experiencing that peak event. And then the floodway designation is that area where, you know, the velocity of water is rushing through. So think of like a river or a creek where water is really moving through. I don't think that's going to be the case for this particular property, because they're actually pretty far removed from the creek proper, but they will still have flood exposure. So they're in the floodplain, and I think actually, you know, that's not going to change. The Minnehaha Creek Watershed District actually has more modern elevation model and predicts that it's probably actually going to go up a little bit if they have more modern information than FEMA, which is very, very old data. And then the floodway designation is kind of a separate additional layer that's independent of that floodplain. But I think what hap, what you see, and I have a map here, if I could maybe share it. Lauren, are you able to display something if I put it on the mat here? That looks great. Thank you. So I think what happened was when the modelers were putting together, you know, what's the elevation going to be along Minnehaha Creek? There was this huge storage area. This floodplain area actually extends all the way down to Pamela Park. And then they just kind of broad stroke called all of it floodway, so that in their model, they could account for that storage. This shape here that appears on the flood insurance rate maps in the flood insurance study has not changed in a really long time. But what has changed with the maps that were updated in 2016 is we essentially put a digital image behind it. So now you can see that it actually crosses over the structure, which is... So now you can see that it actually crosses over the structure, which is problematic for permitting there. So I think it's just a combination of just some coarse modeling that makes it really problematic for this house, for this parcel. But I don't think this is an actual floodway designation. I think it was the modelers just kind of called this entire area, which reaches all the way down to Pamela Park, just broad brushstrokes said this is all going to be floodway for that model calibration.
Have many letters of map revision been submitted from Edina residents? And have we had generally good success with getting those designations altered?
They will be the first. I think it's very rare to, for it to come from like a residential property owner. Typically, it's something that happens on a community scale or there's a big project. The one that is in my mind from in the Minnehaha Creek watershed district is when Methodist Hospital did a huge project and then they remapped a whole panel. And that's what they're going to propose to do here. This is the only path they have with FEMA. We've kind of exhausted all the other potential revision pathways through FEMA that are more just based on an error in the elevation or in the topography. This letter of map revision process where they have to revise an entire panel is really the only process available.
And they can't go get that unless we approve a plan?
They could. I think they were looking for some assurance that a new house could be built here before they go on that journey, which is going to be long and expensive. So when I've talked to other people who have helped do this on behalf of a community or a, you know, property owner that's not a residential property owner, we're talking five figures budget and one or two years long process with FEMA where you're kind of going back and forth on the modeling and the, you know, your consulting engineers are talking with FEMA's engineers as you try to resolve this model update. So I think before they went on that process, they wanted to know, you know, can we even build the house we're thinking of before we go down that path?
How many houses would be impacted by the remodeling that they go for?
For the letter of map revision?
Yep.
I don't remember exactly where the boundary of this panel is, but there's.
Like the house just to the south here, it looks like it might get caught up in the exact same thing.
Yep. These two directly south would be in that same exact position. And I think there's, you know, I can count on my, on one hand, the others in the entire community that are in the same position where that floodway designation probably was just kind of a broad brushstroke rather than a real measure, a real indication of actual risk. There's definitely flood exposure here, but not that floodway of like the velocity of water rushing by this property. So I think it's still appropriate, that elevation standard, because there's going to be exposure, but the floodway designation seems to not be real.
I think the house itself, my house is just the corner of our office is on the floodway and I have to pay flood insurance when we first bought the house.
Got it. And, okay, I think that's all for now. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right. So I guess we'll give an opportunity to the applicant team if they'd like to provide their own presentation or just stand for questions. Either or both works.
I'm 2905 Saddle Brook Circle in Minnetonka, and I'm an architect who's been working with Mike and Courtney, who are here this evening for several years now to try to kind of see. It started with kind of seeing how we could remodel the home and then kind of went down this road here. And Chris did a great job of presenting the unique challenges of this site. And so I thank staff for their guidance and their work on this. So I'll try to be really brief because they kind of covered it all. But I wanted to at least introduce myself and then allow you guys to ask any questions if you may have any. As Chris kind of covered earlier, what we're trying to do is elevate as well as reduce the footprint. We're actually reducing the impervious surface coverage on this site in an effort to pull out of that floodway zone. This is just a quick look. These aren't exact, but it's kind of just giving you an idea of the, the character of the neighborhood and kind of the respect for paying to the side yard setbacks there and trying to fit in with the neighborhood while still conforming to today's ordinances. The building elevations kind of just generally show the grades that we planned. The garage is going to come in where the existing homes garage is today, kind of at the level of the other homes in the neighborhood. And then you see we're lifting that main level up to adhere to that lowest floor elevation requirement. You can see we're, we're making efforts to kind of keep that roof structure a little bit lower as well as, you know, those floor to floor heights as well too, to try to be respectful of the height and again, fit in with the homes in the neighborhood. You know, as far as the 50% basement coverage, you know, we could try to bring in some additional fill, but you're really working against yourself as you're trying to pull out of that floodway. And my, my concern is that you're impacting then the other neighborhoods, well, the other neighbors while kind of creating a steep slope on the side there. This just kind of quickly shows the main level versus where we're going to need to lift up to on our plan for the elevation in order to adhere to that. That's kind of all I have. Just kind of going to reiterate that all of the moves and kind of asks this evening are based on the efforts to pull out of that, that floodway and, you know, along with the city's kind of goal of removing that value and that property from that risk as well too. So thank you for your time and I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you. I don't see any. Thank you. All right. Well, this is a public hearing, so we'll go through the same drill. I will read off how those who might be tuning in remotely can participate and testify. Please call 312-535-8110, enter access code 2630-751-1196. Then enter the password 5454 and press star three on your keypad to get in the queue to speak. While you do that, there's about a minute lag. So we'll give an opportunity first for those who might be here in person that would like to testify. You have three minutes to do so. You can choose either podium, state your full name, address. It will turn green to indicate you got three minutes and red when your time's up. Anyone here that would like to testify? Come on forward.
My name is Mary Engelke, 4201 Philbrook Lane, and we have been there for 32 years and we've known this generational family. They were the very first people in the neighborhood who came with a plate of chocolate chip cookies. And I know this family, their character, their commitment to the environment and to the health and safety of the community. And I can't wait for them to be my neighbors again. The house has been empty for some time, which has been kind of sad, but I see the family there often and I appreciate the hard, hard work that they are doing. I know that they will be a blessing to the neighborhood and to the city of Edina. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the kind words. Anyone else I'd like to say? Come forward.
I just have a couple of questions.
This is, this isn't a question and answer thing. So if you have questions or like comments, like you have three minutes to do that and then we will kind of deliberate over those and maybe we can pose those questions to city staff.
Okay.
Yeah.
I live at 5645 Woodcrest Drive, so I live behind the Bush's house. My question is what's going to happen to the pool? Right now it is green and it's been that way for two years. And I also would like to know what's going to happen to the backyard because the backyard is all overgrown and hasn't been taken care of. So those are my questions.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else who's here that would like to provide testimony? Seeing none? Is there anyone in the queue?
There's not.
But safe to close a public hearing. I'd welcome a motion to do so.
Motion to close the public hearing. Second?
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Public hearings close. Thank you for coming and testifying. I guess on that note, if we have questions, I guess I would have a question about what is current kind of plans and maintenance for the future backyard? Currently and the future, if you'd like to share?
Currently, they are the property owners, so they're going to be maintaining the, the yard in the site. And, you know, as you know, things have kind of been a little bit of leeway for them in the interim. But the plan for the yard in the future is there would be landscaping and the, the pool would remain and be taken care of as well too. Thank you.
Okay. All right. This is our time to deliberate. Any comments people have or further questions? Even a motion?
I think this one's pretty straightforward. I feel like everybody else probably feels the same way, but I think you can certainly objectively feel differently. But, I mean, Planner Harker went through all the different, you know, the conditional use permit, the variance requirement, everything else. I think the conditions here are appropriate. This seems like an extremely painful process, so I can't say I empathize, but I sympathize for you and I appreciate you guys being here tonight and going through all this and wish you the best of luck.
Any other comments? Yeah. Go, Sherman.
I didn't think it was quite as straightforward. I think my, my struggle is a little bit if, and maybe if the flood zone wasn't a part of this conversation, I think we have previously had conversations about letting existing variances not be put into the new dwelling when you do a whole remodel. And here we are going to go from a single story to a two-story, which is, I guess I disagree a little bit, it's a, it's a neighborhood full of ramblers. So, so for the adjacent property owners, it is a, it is a significant difference to have somebody closer and higher up. But I'm deeply sympathetic to the situation with the flood zone in it. And I'm also sort of just wrapping my head around the fact that functionally, we can't meet any of our sustainability goals or affordable housing preservation goals or anything that somehow FEMA has basically rendered some existing lots unbuildable and unimprovable to a large extent. And I'm just so, I really appreciate all of that explanation. I did not fully understand that and I'm just kind of processing that. But it feels like a no-win situation in many ways.
Thank you for channeling Commissioner Miranda. The previous one where there was the patio that wanted to be put in the floodway, the house had been given a variance and it had been raised up. That whole kind of basement scenario was for that house was also because of the floodway. So I think we've given variances for houses, but not for hardscape in the floodway.
Well, I was thinking about the one where they were keeping the basement and then they ended up having to take the first floor off and we let them keep the foundation footprint. That was the one in my mind where it was, there was a lot of conversation about that. That was the right way.
Side yard variance. I don't think there was flooding.
No, no, there wasn't.
Okay, okay, okay. Those are my comments.
Any other comments or proposed motions? I just thought it was thoroughly treated in the staff report and commend the staff for working with the property owner to address the unique circumstances present in this case. So for those reasons, I would support a motion to approve for the reasons already outlined.
I'll motion for the city council to approve of CUP, subject to staff findings and conditions.
You have a second?
Second?
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Congratulations. Good luck on your next steps. All right. So that concludes the public hearing portion of tonight's agenda and we move on to our reports and recommendations. We have resolution B 2409. Findings that the proposed 72nd and France number three TIF plan conforms to the general plans for development and redevelopment of the city as a whole. Economic Development Manager Bill Nuenendorf is here to present. Bill, I don't know if you were present for kind of the beginning of this meeting where we were approving the agenda, but there was conversations of, you know, potentially striking this from the agenda as it feels like it's out of our purview. Carey kind of provided some rationale as to the timing of the TIF application and the development plans and that we are obligated by state law essentially to make this, I mean, basically declaration or finding. Could you kind of explain some background to that and then hopefully that simplifies and reduces the amount of conversations that typically happen around when we have to approve I guess some context for maybe residents tuning in because there's none here present. But typically when we have larger developments that ultimately pursue TIF, it's not necessarily part of those discussions early on for a variety of reasons. And sometimes residents, commissioners, whoever feel slighted by then that getting played later, but that's typical in the process. And that's really not, that's not our purview on the planning commission. Anything to do with TIF, if that's a reason for or against a development that is beyond ours that city council grounds. But if you could kind of fill in the blanks of some of that and explain some of the context of why we need to do this.
Sure. Happy to. And I think a lot of these questions will be answered as I go through my presentation, which was in your packet as well. But the, the conversation here tonight and the content of this resolution does pertain to the use of tax increment financing as a financing tool. We're here this night, this evening because the Minnesota state statutes says that the planning commission should make a determination about the plan, the outcome, not about the budget, not about interest rates, not about financial performance, not about equity or debt, but about the plan that's part of this overall financing arrangement. So that's, that's why we're here this evening. So that's, that's why we're here this evening. I've done these presentations and requests here for several years. Every single time, there's questions that come up. So, that's, that's why I'm here tonight to answer those. So I think I'll walk through the presentation if that's the most appropriate, then we'll get to the, we'll get to the, to the discussion.
I think that'd be fine. And I know there's discussion about potential conflicts of interest with who's approving, you know, authoring something in favor of something else. I think we can save that discussion until when we deliberate. But yeah, that'd be great. Thank you, Bill.
Sure thing.
Present away.
And when I present, I will go through some of those matters in a little bit more detail that, to respond to some of those inquiries. Let's see. My equipment's different than, than I'm used to. I didn't introduce myself. I'm Bill Nudendorf. I'm the city of Edina's economic development manager. I work in our community development department under Carey and get involved in a lot of the financing programs in Edina to help bring that new investment into town. So the resolution tonight is B 2409 and ultimately, we are seeking the planning commission's opinion as to whether or not the project that's embodied in these documents complies with the general plans for development and redevelopment as applied in the city of Edina. In non-legally speak, that means, is the project aligned with our comprehensive plan? So in the presentation, I'll go through a little bit of the background. I'll talk a little bit about process, why we're here, how, how your role tonight fits into the bigger, bigger effort. I'll walk through the proposed TIF plan with specific focus on the outcomes, not on the financing, not on debt, equity and everything else, but about the outcomes. I'll do a summary of our staff findings that were in the report that was attached in your packet and then finally, a recommendation. So tax increment financing, it's a public finance tool that's used in Minnesota as well as 48 of the other states in the U.S. Forty-nine states in total use TIF. Some call it different things, but it's all basically the same. This evening, we're, we're pursuing the creation of a new TIF district to support the investment and the redevelopment by the enclave companies at 7235 France Avenue, the site that's currently occupied by the Macy's Furniture Store. And one of the steps in this process is to get your opinion from the planning commission as to, and that's the words here on the screen in green, whether the TIF plan conforms to the general plans for development and redevelopment of the city as a whole. A very confusing statement, but that's a statement that's in Minnesota statute that we have to reply to. So there's a number of different plans that apply in the city of Edina, as you are well aware. First and foremost, I think is our 2040 comprehensive plan. That includes, I think we're well over a thousand and some pages. It includes many small area plans, sustainability plans, bike plans, pedestrian plans, lots of different documents are embodied in the comprehensive plan. Specifically to this project, we're looking at the Southdale Plan, the Greater Southdale Plan, because that's the location that we're in. Another plan that you may not be as familiar with is the Southeast Edina Redevelopment Project Area and Plan. That document was first written in 1974, hand typed on somebody's typewriter in quintuplet with, with a copy paper to get it done and then revised every few years up till the present day. So those are the three overarching plans that apply to this particular site. And I've pulled just a few excerpts from some of them. They go back to the community visioning that led to our comprehensive plan and a lot of these vision pursuits are encouraging vibrancy in our neighborhoods, building mixed-use nodes that have multimodal transportation options where you can live and work and shop and eat and walk and play all at the same site or in a way that allows you to walk from one site to the next to do those things. Creating jobs, attracting jobs, having a mind towards sustainability, promotion of energy efficient resources and looking at the impact to our overall environment. Those are all types of goals that are embodied in a lot of these plans. And the site in, in specific that we're looking at tonight, the subject of the document that was, that's in front of us, is the Macy's Furniture Site. So right there on France Avenue between 72nd and Gallagher. Going into the history of that, I pulled up an old photo from the early 1950s. Let's see, I don't know if this will show up very well, but here's, here's France Avenue. This is one gravel pit. This is another gravel pit. This is a third and fourth gravel pit. Here's the France Avenue dump, a landscape that we might not recognize today, but that was the history of, at least for the last hundred years of that land. Eventually, it grew into neighborhoods, into shopping centers, grocery stores, parks, malls and everything else. And in 1977, the Dayton Company built a furniture store. They were one of the first private parties that were able to redevelop the gravel, the gravel pit as that wore down and they opened their home store. Eventually Macy's purchased Dayton's after many acquisitions and that's where we are today. So if you're out on the site today, you'll recognize an eight-acre parcel, mostly pavement, couple trees along the edge and a large two-acre footprint of a building that is an earth-sheltered building, kind of looks like a bunker with very few windows and not in the best of condition. And when I say that, I'm referring to the property, not to the business that's successfully operating on that property. So I will try not to refer to this as the Macy's site because the proposal here tonight isn't really about Macy's or about furniture, it's about the future. So we talked a little bit about TIF and there's, there's many steps in this process. I won't go through all of them, but this slide breaks it into three primary steps. The first step is creating this district, creating this financial tool that the city council can use. There's a TIF plan that was in your packet and it talks about budgets and terms and qualifications and lots of other things, but for the planning commission, you're, you're asked to share your expertise as to the scope of that project and the outcome. So we've already submitted the documentation to the school district, to Hennepin County. In the future, we'll have a public hearing, it'll go to the city council, it'll go to the HRA. So your input tonight is, is really focused just on the outcome of the site. Once we get through the step of creating a TIF district, then it goes further down the process where the planning commissioner, commission does not have a role. Most of your role was early, just getting us to this point and rezoning the project, approving the site plans and all those types of things. But there are future steps that you will hear along the way, but those are all by the board, the HRA board and our city council. So the TIF plan that's in your packet was prepared by Ellers and Associates. They are the independent public finance company that the city of Edina uses. The Edina School District also uses that same firm as does the Richfield and Hopkins School District. So they have been serving the overall community for many decades. And this plan has lots of financial background and I know that gets confusing. What we're really here to talk tonight about is Appendix E, the actual result of this TIF plan. If you look at Appendix E, you'll notice two things. One that, when, at the time this was uploaded to your packet, it showed, showed the old version of the site plan. Last week, the city council approved the new version, which looks very like, very much like the old version with a couple little adjustments. So just know that as this progresses, the final version of the TIF plan will include the final documents that were approved by the city council. But that plan is, is, is the same that was recommended by, by this body back in May for, for approval. It was then approved by the city council on a preliminary basis back in June and they just secured their final approvals about a week ago. One additional thing to note, the TIF plan also potentially enables a funding mechanism for that France Avenue pedestrian crossing. Is it an underpass? Is it a bridge? Is it a tunnel? We're still going to figure that out. But this TIF plan is, essentially sets up a financing mechanism where if that project wants to go forward, if that, that passes muster and goes through the due diligence and everything else, this is a, this is a mechanism for the city council to finance that project. I'll include just a couple renderings here, just to refresh your memories. This is PUD number 25. This is a copy of the final site plan that was approved last week. It's pretty much the same as it was in June. Some of the onsite parking switched from head-in parking to parallel parking. The public arc got changed a little bit. The dog area got changed a little bit. Sidewalks got twisted around a little bit. A few changes to the building architecture and actually reducing the mass of the building in response to some concerns by the neighbors. But that's the final site plan. Updated renderings, should look very familiar to you. Final rendering from looking to the northwest. And then these are a few renderings of that future pedestrian crossing and these might look new to you. This is a concept that's just in its infancy, that started, the conversation started with the HRA board because ultimately, to finance this, we need to figure out how to finance it and then we have to figure out if it's something we actually want to build and, and pursue. So these are a couple of renderings, just as a reference point. In the document, or actually in the report, I did go through staff findings where we looked into each of these applicable plans in more detail, the redevelopment plan from 1974 and to 2012 and then to the present. We went through the comprehensive plan, looking at how that area is guided. Went through each of the key sections of the comprehensive plan as far as some of the land use goals, housing goals, economic goals. We looked at the Greater Southdale Plan, looking at many of the goals there of subdividing these big lots into smaller lots, applying the street room concept, incorporating transit, pedestrian and bicycle facilities, pursuing shared parking. And of course, I'm happy to answer any questions about those, but in summary, after looking at the plans that the city has adopted, comprehensive plan, et cetera, it's, it's our finding and our recommendation that this body affirm that those plans are consistent with the overall comprehensive plan. And the reason that I'm asking, and I probably should have said this in the beginning, not every community is like Edina. There are some communities where you might have an independent EDA or HRA that doesn't think along the same lines as the planning commission. They might bring forward a plan that meets someone else's purpose, but might actually violate the con-plan. In Edina, since our HRA board is well-aligned with our city council, who's generally well-aligned with our planning commission, who's generally well-aligned with our school districts, we tend to work much more cooperatively with one another to avoid those surprises. But yet, state law still asks that we come here tonight and have you affirm something that you've already affirmed back in May. So it does seem kind of redundant, probably should have opened with that now that I say it. But I think I touched on most of the issues. If there's anything else, please let me know. But certainly, the, in your packet, there's a copy of the resolution that summarizes these findings, summarizes the reason we're here and what your, what your, what your findings will be used for. And with that, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions, comments, anything for Bill? Yeah.
I've just got a quick, quick one right out of the gate about the France Avenue pedestrian crossing project. So, so we, so what, the ask of us tonight is to find that that concept, in addition to the Macy's redevelopment project that was already, is also consistent with the general plans governing development in Edina. Is that right?
That's a good question.
How would you articulate that?
Yeah, that's a good question. That's a really good question that I don't have an answer for.
The only reason I ask is because you said the, if, you know, we're going through this process and maybe I can ask it a little differently or you, we can just have a conversation about it. But I was, I was kind of like paying more attention when you said, we'll do this step and then, you know, this approval is one step along the way to using TIF financing to build the pedestrian crossing. And it sort of seemed like, you know, if we say yes, we're saying, yeah, the Macy's project's consistent with the development plans that we talked about, but also this future pedestrian crossing would be consistent with those. And so I'm just trying to understand if that's what we'd be saying by saying yes. And the reason I'm asking is because, you know, we've talked about this pedestrian crossing a fair amount in this body. I think what people have said is, we've never seen any concept for it. It's been discussed in other, you know, venues, but not really here. When it has been discussed here, folks have actually had concerns about whether that crossing would be consistent, not the project, but whether the crossing would be consistent with the development plans and more anything beyond that, whether it would actually degrade and devalue some of the products that are being built around this area and make them less consistent with the plans that, you know, we're all familiar with, the projects that have already been approved. So that's, I'm just letting you know, like the pedestrian crossing is a little bit of an issue and I just want more clarity about what a yes or a no would mean with respect to that aspect of this whole project. Because if it would mean, yes, we're finding that it's consistent, I think some folks here might want to know a little bit more about what that concept might look like so we can do more diligence and evaluate whether it is or isn't consistent with those other planning documents you mentioned. So that's the context behind the question. I think others would probably raise the same thing and I just wanted to give you an opportunity to just talk a little bit more about that. So we're a little more educated.
Along with the likelihood too, I think. In addition to your question, the likelihood.
Yes. I think just looking historically back to other TIF plan approvals, a future concept like that isn't part of this. It's not part of this. So, and that, that's what we'd have to separate. So like typically, you don't know what TIF could then get used for in the future, but like the monies that are gained from TIF funding can be used for certain things and I see this as an example of what it could be used for, not this is what it's going to be used for. And maybe that's different with this one compared to previous ones, but that previously, like you wouldn't know, like there usually isn't something on the table.
Does it say something? I don't think it's, I, I don't know that I saw that one way or the other in the materials. I'd have to go back and look at them again. I was just responding to, to your presentation where I, I thought I heard you say, if we, you know, vote yes, then, you know, we don't have another say as to whether this pedestrian crossing conforms to development plans. Our role is done and some other body could just decide to use TIF, TIF financing to build that project too. But, so I don't, I'm more just asking questions than having a strong opinion.
Very fair.
Well, this was presented to the HRA, was the bridge, the tunnel, part of the TIF proposal, like explicitly? First time you, first time you brought this to the HRA?
I'm sorry, could you?
Was the tunnel, was the tunnel an explicit part of the TIF ask when we presented this to the HRA?
Uh, no, it was not.
Was not? Okay. But it is our intent, I mean, is it our intent to use the TIF funds from this, this TIF plan for the pedestrian crossing?
So there were a variety of questions? Would you like me to answer some of those?
Sure.
Okay, all right. So the, the TIF plan that's in front of you includes Appendix E, which describes the plan that was approved for the 7235 site. It also includes a paragraph, a short paragraph, about public improvements that would pursue pedestrian crossing across France Avenue. So, so far, the preliminary looks in that is very preliminary. We've looked at a tunnel under, we've looked at a bridge over, we've looked at an improved at-grade crosswalk essentially, looking, looking at a number of different things. The underpass version seems to be the most. The underpass version seems to be the most likely of those three options. That being said, how likely is it? Standing here tonight, I have no idea. Right now, it's, I would lump it in the category of an interesting idea that's worth exploring to see if we should actually do something there. I do know that with the redevelopment on the west side of the street and the redevelopment on the east side of the street, if we ever want to make a better connection between those neighborhoods, this is a great location and a great time to do it. The history of this project dates back to 2007 with the urban design plan that founded the Edina Promenade, the Promenade Park, where they recommended actually an overhead bridge be constructed at that time, right at the corner of 72nd and France. That bridge never got funded for a number of different reasons, but yet, that laid the groundwork for, gosh, wouldn't it be better if we could cross the street without scurrying across eight to 10 lanes of traffic? So that's a little bit about the history of it. But as far as likelihood, timing, what it looks like, is it over, is it under, is it nothing? I mean, nothing is definitely an option, but we know that bold projects like this, like an underpass, require financing. Tax increment financing is set up and used for public infrastructure improvements, whether it's under, over, or at-grade. And so in the TIF plan, we wanted to include public infrastructure improvements as an eligible expense, just frankly, like we do for every one of our TIF districts. The Eden Wilson, all the roadwork around City Hall is actually funded by that project. At Grandview, all the roadwork that we did there a few years ago was funded by the taxes from the Abidore property that was constructed there. So this, it's language that's put in every TIF plan, but in this case, we actually put an illustration because we had one. As far as the process to actually approve any kind of public infrastructure improvement, I don't know if the planning commission has a role. I mean, it would go through the city council, through the transportation commission, through staff, through the CIP. I don't know if it goes through planning commission for a public infrastructure project. So that's a little bit about the background and where we are. I think I hit most of your questions in that.
What role did LHB play, or has they played, in this pedestrian crossing exploration?
Sure. So LHB is a full-service, multidisciplinary firm based in either Duluth or Minneapolis. So they have architects, engineers, planners, landscapers, roadway engineers, civil engineers, building engineers. So for this project, for the underpass, we initially worked with a civil engineering firm, and they were responsive to our questions, but did not apply the type of creativity that we're really seeking here. And so I wanted to switch firms that could apply not just an engineering perspective, but also to integrate that planning and that social perspective. And so we switched to LHB. So they initially did just some initial visioning about a year ago, in 2023, just to see what might this look like and what other precedents was there around the world, around the country. And then earlier this year, we did sign a contract with LHB to actually pursue this a little bit further and start doing some conceptual engineering. Because fundamentally, there's some big questions, especially regarding, do we go under or do we go over? And a lot of that has regards with, it has to do with the water table, with the elevations of the stormwater, with the elevations of the building, the first floor, how does that line up? And so the HRA signed a contract with LHB, I believe in February, to do some of that initial work. And that work is about 80% complete at this point.
So would it be fair to say LHB has a vested interest in seeing this pedestrian crossing being built?
No, I don't think that would be a fair statement.
Would they be, so they would give you the concept, but they wouldn't be awarded any further contract to help design it beyond, or in the upcoming months, once TIF is approved?
I don't know that. At this point, the council has, the city council has urged, I think at the last city council meeting, they wanted to get something on paper that documents that they want to pursue this concept further. They did not specify that we use one company or the other to do that. And if this does turn into a real engineering project, I presume we'd go up to bid. I mean, at this point, we're just doing that preliminary exploration. If this turns into a real project, I mean, that design contract would be pretty large, and we typically go up for bid for the big ones. So I don't know what the future holds.
Yeah, Commissioner Padilla.
Thank you, Bill. I just have one question. Kind of a 50,000-foot level, public benefit should be outcome, the outcome of a TIF project, correct?
That's how our Dyna policy is written. That's not necessarily how state law is written.
Okay, but that's the intention in this city. So, and then I want to go ahead and confirm that the Edina City Schools will not get $1 of anything in this project.
That's not correct at all.
Okay, so I know this project is not in the Edina City School District.
Oh, okay, you threw me on that one. So you asked, will the Edina City Schools get $1 from this project?
Get a benefit. I'm looking for the public benefit that's to the Edina City Schools.
Sure. So this site, the 7235 site, is in the Richfield School District.
Correct.
So the property taxes, both today and in the future, from this site, will directly benefit the Richfield School District, not the Edina School District. That's the property taxes. In August, we brought elders in to do a joint presentation to the HRA board and the school And they reminded us that the property taxes are just a small portion of the funding for a school. Most of the school funding comes from the pupils, per student in the seats.
From the state.
From the state, correct. So with open enrollment, right now, about 18% to 20% of the seats in Edina schools are actually open enrolled from elsewhere, including Richfield. So theoretically, which is kind of where we're going, I guess, if a pupil lives on this site and eventually chooses to opt into the Edina Schools versus the Richfield Schools, they would bring the state funding that goes along with that pupil. But there's a lot of hypotheticals in those assumptions, so I always wish there was like an easy yes or no answer, and there rarely is.
It seems to me, though, that the public benefit, you'd have to look at greater than just the Edina area in order to see the public benefit to the schools from the TIF funding.
When we look at the use of TIF, I need to look at all of the school districts that serve Edina. So Hopkins serves Edina, Richfield serves Edina, and Edina Schools serve Edina. So with a tax increment plan, we look specifically at the tax district that has jurisdiction there. So that's why in the TIF plan, if you wanted to get into that, but again, we're not asking you to get into that because that's a financing-type question, you'll find language about the Richfield Schools, not about the Edina Schools.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Felton?
I just wanted to respond to that a little bit. I mean, somewhere along the way, just someone decided to excise a portion of southeast Edina into the Richfield School District rather than Edina. And I don't think that this project is still in Edina. And, you know, we can go through it in our personal, but the public benefit is also in the way the project conforms to the comprehensive plan. And so the fact that this area has been excised into the Richfield School District, you know, I think that was history that happened a long time. I don't know when it happened. Do you know, Carrie?
I don't know for certain, but I've heard over the years that it was based on bus routes and where bus drivers were willing to go, years and years, decades ago. I know our city manager has tried to adjust some of those boundaries. As I think we've talked about before, there's an apartment building where on one side of the hallway, you go to Edina Schools; on the other side, you go to Richfield. And just trying to reconcile some of those things, and to no avail at this point. But yes, they could be moved in the future.
Okay, I have a couple. That Commissioner Bornstein brought up, the fact that that was, that, I mean, I just read Appendix E. It is, there is a paragraph about it in there, and that, I don't know, it seems like we ought to omit that. I don't know. At the very end of Appendix E, there's a paragraph about the potential pedestrian And Bill, I guess tied to that, if that weren't mentioned in there, I mean, does that change anything? Because I know there's restricted uses for TIF typically, either depending on like geographic boundaries and/or like specific use of funds and money. So like, how I read that is like, it seems almost inappropriate to even have that in there, like, why not just omit it? Or if it's in there, is that now giving this extra right to use these TIF funds that otherwise wouldn't happen if we didn't have that in there? And why I want to be careful with words is, one of the previous developments, it was because of like an "and" instead of an "or." We pretty much had to let them not put a restaurant on the main floor, you know, because of how one word got written. So to Commissioner Bornstein's point, like, I definitely do want to understand, by adding that paragraph, are we allowing this potential for something that would otherwise be restricted?
And can I add to that? Because I know that in some TIF districts, the Southdale Pool TIF District, right, you could use money from the pool in different parcels. I wondered, by having this TIF district over here, and, you know, whether or not there's a TIF district on the other side of France, that the lack of a broader geographic area, would that be further problematic for the cost for, if the bridge ever were to happen?
If I could respond to your question first. So no, I don't think that it would be problematic. And then, in regards to the decision whether or not to fund some type of public infrastructure, whether it goes under, over, at-grade, or nothing, that decision would still be made by the city council. And the general language in the TIF plan references public infrastructure, which could include anything that I just described, roads, sidewalks, trails, pipes, bridges, tunnels, anything. So omitting the last paragraph or the last sentence wouldn't change the rest of the document.
Is that on the site, neighboring the site? Because I remember geography was a piece of everything. So is the cost go to a component of that project that occurs on the site, not outside of the site unless we mention it here? I just want to like, I want to be clear on that, too.
Sure. Yeah, so the boundaries are written so that money, TIF monies collected in this district could be, can be spent within the boundaries of the district, and the boundaries include the private parcel, as well as the adjacent public rights-of-way adjacent to that parcel. So it could be spent on France Avenue, it could be spent on the Promenade on the east At some point, the, kind of the smell test kicks in. France Avenue is a big street. It goes for miles in both directions. You can't use TIF from this district four miles up the road. For this district, you know, to me, a reasonable use of TIF would be public improvements, maybe from like 72nd down to Gallagher, in that immediate area. To pull monies out and spend it further away, I don't think that would pass legal muster.
Especially if they break up that parcel. And, I mean, this project right here, use TIF, right, as, right?
Correct. The project by City Hall used TIF.
Yeah, so I recall there was some geographic consideration. So it seems that even though that's written in there, like, that's okay, but it'd also be okay to not have that in there. And you asked us to react to Exhibit E, so I'm, just looking at Exhibit E, that's in there. Like, I would rather it not be in there. However, it sounds like something like that, or on any other neighboring parcel, could, monies could be used to make those type of public improvements, or at least contribute to them. Right? So by writing that in there, doesn't allow an exception, right? So adding that paragraph specific to an underpass doesn't provide that exception that would otherwise be restricted in this TIF plan? That's just what I wanted to make sure. And it sounds like you clarified it wouldn't.
Yeah, the terminology, "public infrastructure," is throughout the document, and that's always a legitimate TIF expense.
So is there a reason why that's called out specifically in there, or could that be omitted?
Uh...
The pedestrian cross, it's like the last paragraph of Exhibit E.
It...
Like, does it need to be in there?
It probably could be omitted until I got to the city council, and they told me to write that up and include those types of options. At this point, I get the sense that the city council wants that option. They're not sure if they're going to go there, they're not sure if they're going to fund it, they're not sure what it's going to look like, they're not sure if it's going to go under, over, or through. But they, based on their last comments at the previous city council meeting, they wanted to have a placeholder so that if it actually turns out to be a project they want to pursue, they have an ability to fund it.
But it sounds like you don't need it in there, right? All right, yeah, Commissioner Felton?
Well, can we make our recommendation just about the Macy's site?
I think that gets back to Commissioner Bornstein's question. I think that's what I understood this TIF plan to only encompass and not extrapolate to some potential, anything specific, because that just doesn't seem appropriate.
Yeah. You could reasonably, and I wish I was more informed about all this TIF stuff, so I could see how all this was connected. Because I think it is connected somehow. I don't think there'd be an appendix in there for no reason. I think it's there as a placeholder to create options later, and I think just to make a clearer record of what might be, what type of pedestrian...
The idea of like a public infrastructure.
Yeah, to just give more color to it.
Yeah, I don't mind something as like, there's an idea, but like, to label it as like a dedicated option just seems like it's unnecessary, because they could do it if they wanted. Like, there is that option. So why, like, anything's on the table, correct?
Right, so you said, you're right, it can go towards public infrastructure in general, right? So then there really needs to be, no need to call out the bridge or crossing specifically, right? If this were omitted, they could still do that. The city council still can explore this option without this being called out, right?
I think to Commissioner Day's point, it does seem like a conflict of interest where the person issuing this TIF plan report is the one that...
Came up with the concept.
Yeah, I don't know, that seems, it seems like it doesn't pass a smell test, but Commissioner Feld.
I believe LHB was in here because they did an assessment of the existing building.
Do you mean LHB is in this plan? I'm not sure what you mean.
No, LHB is in this packet because they did a review of the existing Macy's building and called it substandard.
Correct. LHB is a division that evaluates existing buildings for compliance with the TIF statutes.
Yeah.
And that division wrote a report that says that that building qualifies.
Yeah. I think that's the only reason LHB is in here.
And that was an independent action of the underpass, overpass.
They authored the, they authored this 160-page plan. It's their name. So I'm just referring to page 159 of 160, and 160 of 160, where it's referencing their other idea, and one that, it doesn't feel like we need to have it on here in any reason except, there isn't a reason, unless it's just transparency toward like, oh, here's a potential idea.
I would, I think that's what we're all saying, and what city staff is saying as well, is that it doesn't need to be there. City council might like to see it, because everyone's excited about thinking about the possibility of maybe having this happen, since we've been thinking about it since the 1970s, some sort of crossing. So, I don't, to Commissioner Bornstein's question, I think we're clear that it doesn't hamstring the use of the TIF, and it doesn't prevent us, if this wasn't there, we could still use it, because it would be an infrastructure adjacent to the site. So it seems like six of one have to, I mean, it all works.
Except that the idea was generated by the author, the author of this report separately. It seems like that, there just appears to be like, I don't know.
If I can jump in.
Yeah, sure.
I will happily take credit for realizing that two projects, like, two properties across the street from each other were redeveloping at the same time, and this might be an opportunity to do something we've been talking about since 2007. I had mentioned, we initially worked with a civil engineering group. That's a fine firm. They do very good engineering work. But that group did not bring the creativity that's needed in a Dyna. So I made the decision to switch companies to a firm that's more comprehensive, where they bring in engineers, planners, landscape architects, and architects all together in the same room. I know that those types of conversations can yield more creative results. So it was my decision to switch from the standard engineering firm to pursue this idea. To make a leap that this is some kind of underhanded conflict is a pretty tremendous leap.
No, it's just the fact that they were the ones that generated the idea, and they're writing the report that then prompts that. It seems kind of like circular. I don't know.
The LHB project number 230310.00, performance-driven design, is only the report on the existing Macy's building. Is that what you're referring to?
It's for the TIF district.
Yeah, I guess.
TIF Plan 72nd, France, number three draft, page 59 of 62.
Yeah, I'm looking at their whole.
Yeah, they've been a consultant on a lot of projects.
Yeah, it's, I mean, they authored the whole thing. I just wanted to make it clear, like, if it would make it easier to like, remove any sniff of like, a conflict of interest, it seemed to me it'd be wise to just eliminate that, if it doesn't have to be there. It seems like other TIF plans haven't earmarked or called out a specific investment or option before, that I've been aware of. So this would be the first. And that, if you said that's okay, like, I trust you. I'm just trying to find things that would satisfy any constituent who might be caring and wanting to make sure that we're navigating this process without conflicts, without anything, so.
We've taken the same approach on this plan, on this TIF plan, that we took on the Grand Vii II TIF plan, the 50th and France TIF plan, the 44th TIF plan, the Eden Wilson TIF plan. So there's nothing, we've very, we've been very consistent in how we pursue these.
Okay.
I don't see a conflict there.
Here's where I'm still a little confused, and trying to not make it difficult. I think, I'm less concerned about the conflict thing. I'm more focused on just the substance of what a vote would mean. And I can't remember what language you said. I'm just sorry, I'm forgetting the language. I think it was something like, you know, we find that the project is consistent with, you know, the general plans for development, and that would include improvements to the pedestrian realm or something, or improvements to the public realm, or something to that effect. And typically, you know, that would be like, improvements to an at-grade crossing, a sidewalk, and like, that wouldn't be controversial at all. And I think everybody here would be like, yeah, the project was approved. It's clearly consistent with the Southdale Plan, the Southeast Dyna Plan, the Comprehensive Plan, and of course, using some funds to improve like, at-grade pedestrian crossings consistent with that. I don't even think we'd be having this conversation. It's just the fact that these specific sort of unusual pedestrian, bridge, and tunnel concepts are being called out as ones that might get, like, be subparts, where I'm wondering, in order to vote yes, you know, knowing that those are also on the table, do we need to evaluate whether those concepts are consistent with the plans or not? And that's just where I'm getting a little bit stuck. I don't know what those concepts are, and whether they would be consistent with the plans or not, because some of the ones we've seen, sort of seem like maybe they would be less consistent with some of the plans that are in place for that area. And so that is, that is the only place where I'm getting a little bit hung up, is, does everybody kind of see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I'm not a TIF expert, so Bill, tell me when I'm wrong. But in the PUD, as a condition of the proposal of the PUD, the developer will have to make certain infrastructure improvements. Will have to take down a substandard building. Will have to do environmental cleanup. They'll have to do all of that as part of the guarantee to get the TIF financing for the developer. Eventually, the city will get dollars from that TIF district, and we're talking about how the city could spend those dollars. We're still going to get all the infrastructure improvements from the developer as a condition for them getting this loan. So the city then can take those TIF dollars and do any additional infrastructure in and around the area, whether it's the bridge or not the bridge. But the benefit to us as a city is, we have a substandard building removed from the city. We have environmental cleanup, and we have new infrastructure and amenities in that PUD district.
And what I'm also hearing is, any kind of overpass or underpass or pedestrian crossing is between the city council and the traffic commission. Yeah.
It's just mentioned in this plan, so that, but our ask is, is this plan?
The TIF plan.
Does the TIF plan conform? And this is part of it.
I mean, if you ask for $24 million of that TIF to go to that undercrossing, then I would say that it probably doesn't conform to the, to the plan, to redevelopment plans, and I wouldn't have seen any details on the bridge.
I don't think we're being asked about what the city does with the dollars on the back end of the project. We're being asked if the project, and all of the things that are part of the project are in compliance with the Southdale Comprehensive Plan, right?
No, it's the TIF plan, not the project. Is the TIF plan, does the TIF plan conform basically to the comprehensive?
The TIF plan that includes the demolition of the structure, the environmental cleanup, the road.
And this discussion of the, and the discussion of the crossing.
Perhaps I can interject.
Yeah, please.
The planning commission has nothing to do with how the money's spent.
Right.
Then why are we being asked to give a blessing to it?
Because we're being asked, but the plan.
But.
The plan has a TIF district. But, I mean, it's like a revenue stream. So, we're being asked if the justification for the loan that the city is making, in this development as fully articulated, is conforming with other documents. When the city gets the revenue stream from creating the TIF district, like, when they get their loan paid back with interest, how they spend that is not our purview. I mean, I don't know.
Then why is it in the project description that we have to make our purview tonight? That was my question.
But there's also, like, financials in here about how they're going to, Ellers is going to evaluate.
But not in Appendix E. Appendix E was the only thing we're asked to advise on. So that's why I was just saying, couldn't we just remove that last paragraph of Appendix E? That's what we're asked about, right? Does the project, as in Appendix E, the description, as part of this TIF plan, conform to the Comprehensive Plan? That gets back to Commissioner Bornstein's question, like, of that nuance. And it is mentioned there. That's why I'm like, couldn't we just not mention it there and make this a lot easier for everything we've talked about? The last paragraph of Appendix E. Yeah.
If I could interject, so, part of the reason that we included it in there is, there's the Southeast Dyna Redevelopment Plan, and I've got one slide on, pulled up here. But in that plan, and that actually comes way before the Comprehensive Plan was written, one of the fundamental goals for creating this redevelopment plan, and then using TIF dating back to the 70s, was to quote, "improve access for pedestrians and bicyclists throughout that whole France Avenue area." Remember, in the 1970s, it was gravel pits, dumps, and a county highway. There was no provision for people. And so that was one of the fundamental natures of that initial plan, was to create those types of opportunities. Over the decades, Adina's come a long way. We've got bike trails, we've got sidewalks, we've got connections in different places. With this proposed TIF district, we'd like to continue to pursue that goal of improving access by connecting neighborhoods on either side of the street. So that's why we included it in there. It seemed as, I was having conversations or listening to the city council conversations, that seemed like an important topic, to be able to cross the street safely. Again, whether you go under, over, or at grade is, you know, that'll be determined in the future. But having some kind of improvement seemed to be of interest to folks. We could have omitted it, but since there's been conversation, and people tended to like some type of improvement, I thought it was more clear to include something in there. That backfired on me tonight. But that's why it's in there.
Yeah, I just personally, if Commissioner Bornstein didn't bring it up, I was already, all right, this is easy, we'll approve it. And it just added a nuance that, again, like, words matter. So I just wanted to make sure, like, we weren't, like, we weren't creating an exception to otherwise a restriction, which it doesn't seem like we would. So I feel like we're good. But it does add this weird nuance of, the project we're talking about is directly referencing another project in its description. So, I'll leave it at that. I don't need to beat a dead horse. Yeah. Commissioner Padilla.
Do you use TIF for Centennial Lakes?
The city did use TIF for Centennial Lakes. For Edinburgh, for the condos, for the offices. I don't think for the retail, but for the park space and the office space in particular, and most of the condos, we used TIF.
Can you use TIF for Centennial Lakes anymore? Let's say that type of development.
Sure, they're doing it in St. Paul. The Highland Bridge Development is using TIF as a public finance tool. I don't think you could do it at Centennial Lakes today. You'd have to inspect all the buildings and call them blighted and substandard. I don't think you could do that at Centennial Lakes today.
Well, before we get further, I just want to say, thank you. You knew why you come here, is because things get all mixed up in a blender, but we do, like, there has been things where like, one word has really mattered later, so we want to definitely be cautious and feel well confident about it, but, I mean, I feel good. What do you, less good?
I hate being difficult. Like, this is not what I want. I just know this topic, so this topic's been percolating around for many, many months with this group. So it just has been. And this TIF plan, this TIF plan says, "this underpass or bridge crossing will address", blah, blah, blah. So, I mean, the TIF plan, it seems, includes specifically contemplating an underpass or bridge. And whether or not someone thinks it's a good idea to spend money on it, that's not for us to decide. And that's not what I'm talking about. Whether that type of built structure conforms with some of the planning documents we're talking about, and, you know, and is consistent or inconsistent with them, that is the only thing I'm interested in talking about. And not whether it's a good idea financially, but does that type of structure actually impair some of the, some of the planning, negatively impact some of the planning concerns that we've had? I know Commissioner Miranda had those concerns significantly.
I do as well, yeah, for sure.
You know, significant concerns. And so, that is, that is the piece where, like, if I could say, the whole project and public realm improvements are going, of course. But we just, I don't have enough information to know one way or the other, whether the underpass or bridge crossing that's described in the, in the TIF plan is consistent with the planning documents. I haven't done the analysis yet. Maybe it is. So, sorry for being a stickler. I think it's better for us to talk through this stuff now, though, than like, later on, which has happened with some of the other projects in this exact area. Like Jimmy was saying, there was an "and/or" that was basically the difference between getting a strong project and a okay project that was a little less strong. So, that's why our group is focused on this kind of stuff.
You're fine. Can we say, "this underpass at grade or bridge crossing"? I mean, if we don't know what it is.
Sure, it says something to that effect, but if there's a way to wordsmith it, that makes it more comfortable, that's fine.
Because it says, "this work is intended to improve pedestrian and bicyclist routes to and from the TIF district," and I think we all agree with that. Integrated site plans for development, "this underpass or bridge crossing will address existing vehicular pedestrian safety." If it says, "this underpass at grade or bridge crossing."
I feel like you should just take that whole paragraph out and simplify it all, right?
The very last sentence says, "it could be used as a funding source." Like, it's written as a hypothetical, that the TIF could be used to fund the public crossing if directed by the HRA.
But aren't we only talking about the Macy's site?
I mean, that's the boundary.
That's why I don't get it.
It's just an idea for the city staff of what they could do if they wanted to envision what adjacent infrastructure could look like. I just, I don't think it's an "and/or."
Why do they want it in there?
This is like a 60-page document, though. The whole thing is the TIF plan, and there's lots of words in here that we generally don't understand in many ways, but I think the land use piece with inside the property lines isn't changing.
I mean, all we were asked is to react to like, these three pages, so that.
We're asked to, the whole thing is the TIF plan.
Yeah, but like, Appendix E specifically was our ask, right? Right? Yeah. We can just keep going and going and going.
Not sure if it helps or not, but when you all reviewed this, the condition on the developer was to create a plan that could accommodate either one. So there was no detail about whether we're going to go over, under. That was the condition of the, of the land use requests.
Okay, there was a condition, even, there was?
That the project had to accommodate either scenario. So either underneath, at grade.
That's a helpful.
Yes.
Okay, that's helpful, because then, right, then it's, okay.
And we've either ordered to positive.
Yeah. I don't know.
Well, I was stuck on the tarmac in Tennessee during that meeting, and I wasn't here one way or the other. So I might have to abstain on this one, if we're not able to take that sentence out, not because I'm trying to be difficult. I just don't feel like I have enough information to decide whether this TIF plan conforms with the planning documents right now. Maybe, maybe I could get there, but I just think I've learned from past experience on this one.
Thanks. Does everyone else feel in any questions? Any motions?
I'm just going to say, I'm going to abstain as well. I feel the same way. I don't have enough detail about the TIF plan. It's very generic statement, this early in the project, and so I don't, I can't give a blessing either way about whether it meets the development or redevelopment plan for the city as a whole.
Are we doing our deliberations?
Yeah, this is still deliberations. What I will say, from Carrie's clarification, if those were actually mentioned and conditioned in the actual development plan, I feel much better about this. better about this and those words in there. So if that is confirmed, I'm okay with this in here. I don't feel like there is a conflict between anything, really.
And for, and for those of you who are here, it's just, I was personally not at that meeting, I didn't do that vote, and I didn't do that analysis. So, but if, for those of you who are here, and reached that outcome, I mean, you might have a different way of thinking about it. So I totally understand and respect what you're saying.
Commissioner Feld?
Since we're deliberating, I am excited about this plan, because this is the first one that's going to break down a super block into four sections, and have a north-south road, and an east-west access, and the setback from the promenade, and that additional artwork. I think it's super exciting that it's happening. I am for better pedestrian access and bicycle access, and so I'm all for this.
In support of it.
As am I. Commissioner Padilla?
I'll be voting against it. I voted against the project, so I don't think in good faith, if I voted against the project, I can vote for the TIF.
Okay, so just projecting forward, if there's six of us to abstain, three in favor, one, it still passes, right?
You need a majority, right?
All right, well, let, are we good to just go to, I guess we need a motion first?
Motion to
Adopt.
Adopt.
Resolution.
The resolution.
I second.
We'll just do a roll call vote, make it easy again.
Commissioner Padilla?
Nay.
Commissioner Day, sorry.
Abstain.
Commissioner Bornstein?
Yeah, abstain.
Commissioner Feld?
Aye.
Commissioner Heneman?
Aye.
Chair Bennett?
Aye. Resolution has been approved to be adopted. Thank you for that fun one, you know it always is. Okay. Well, that was painful, and I'm glad we're through it. But thank you for bringing up Commissioner Bornstein every time. Again, like, words matter. They've haunted us before, so I'm glad we've had these conversations tonight. So we're not surprised at any point going forward. Thank you for the clarification, Carrie. Thank you for the presentation, Bill. And on to chair and member comments, any of them. Okay, on to staff comments.
Yeah, a couple of updates from City Council. The council, at their last meeting, held the public hearing on the Heritage Preservation Commission's ordinance proposal. They'll take action at their meeting on October 1st. As mentioned here tonight, they did take final action on the Macy's project, so they, they did receive their final rezoning. The Hankerson Project, the subdivision, the three-lot subdivision, that will go to the City Council October 1st. And just a reminder, that October 1st, Chair Bennett will present our work plan to the City Council at the work session. That's it for me.
Anyone's welcome to join. It's really fun. Seriously. And I guess there's one more order of business.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries the meeting, has been adjourned. Thank you, everyone.